Is that the name the town appointed? I don't know what it's about.
Get started at 6:00. Welcome here to March 12th, the United States of America. Our call is being joined. Please give your attention to Councilman Duncan, who will provide the indication. Stand as you are able.
And then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It is spring break week, so the weather's been great. So for everyone who has children at home, they're trying to wrangle. That's been kind of nice. Hopefully, more people have had as much fun as the children have. So hopefully, if you haven't yet, you've still got a few days left in your spring break week to enjoy it. So hopefully, so in that spirit, by your heads. As we embark on this meeting tonight, we ask for an agenda shorter than a Snapchat. Let our discussions be as crisp and concise as a haiku. May tangents and off-topic ramblings be sent to the land of forgotten passwords. We ask for the ability to translate jargon into plain, understandable language. Grant us the power to decipher acronyms and buzzwords into sentences even a toddler can comprehend. In return, we pledge to keep our use of perplexing terminology to a minimum, sparing our citizens from bafflement. And finally, thank you for helping us achieve clarity without the need for a cryptic decoder. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's going to be hard to match next time, Spencer. Okay. First item on the agenda is roll call. Brenda?
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Kell.
Here.
Miller.
Yes.
And Dobler.
Yes.
We have 10 present.
Okay, thank you. Move on to second item, the consent agenda. Brenda?
Items A and B are ordinances introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstedt, allowing an approving city expenditures for the period of December 30 through January 26 and January 27 through February 23, 2024, and enumerating set expenditures therein. See, our minutes of the regular meeting in March 5, 2024, and there are no applications.
We've heard the consent agenda is read. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, seconded by Councilman Kell. Well, do the roll call, please.
Councilmembers Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
And Dobler.
Yes.
We have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Move on to agenda item number three, action items. Brenda?
A is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project numbers 841-097 Phase 5, 841-079 Phase 17, and 501-105 Phase 8 for street and stormwater improvement on Northwest Elm Road from Spangles to Topeka Boulevard.
Mr. City Manager.
We are a governing body. These items, if you have questions, will be covered by Rochelle Matthews, our interim Finance Director. Oh, Braxton Copley. There you go.
The first item is a combined project. It's on Elm Road, which is that little curved road.
It goes from Spangles and joins up with Topeka Boulevard. The street portion is going to be just a little over $500,000, and the storm is right at $500,000. So combined project budget of just over a million. The street work is largely going to be mill and overlay with some full-depth patching where necessary in the storm. Even though it's alluvial soil up there, this is largely corrugated metal pipe, which was just in horrible condition. So we always like to get that out from underneath the road so we don't have a failure down the line. So gladly stand for any questions, and I would respectfully request approval of this project.
Okay. Because all of these come under the call to the Infrastructure Committee, City Manager?
Mayor and governing body, I also believe the Public Infrastructure Committee Chair is Councilwoman Ortiz, who likely has something to add to this.
That's what I was going to ask. Give the Chair an opportunity if you want to add something to all of these items as we go through them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I really don't. I think Braxton does a fine job, and with that prayer, they want us to get through it right away. I think cutting me out will get us there.
Okay. So we've heard the action item is read, then. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, seconded by Councilman Dobler. If you'll take the roll, please.
Councilmembers Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
And Duncan.
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Move on to 3B, action item. If the clerk will read.
B is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 841-097 Phase 11 for street improvement on Southeast Greenfield Court.
Hey, Braxton.
Yes, this is another project that exceeds $250,000, which requires the council's specific approval. This project actually came, it's from Councilmember Banks' district. It came in when I was still in the utilities as a complaint from constituent that the water never drained from the cul-de-sac in their street in front of their house, which contributed to a very significant algae growth. And so we took an opportunity to look at it, decided it really wasn't a stormwater. The issue was the street was incorrectly designed and constructed, that it was basically flat and did not have positive drainage. And so we've finally been able to obtain funding, and would like your approval so we can move forward with this $350,000 project to deal with an issue that's existed for many, many years.
Great. Thank you, sir. Giving the chance, just in case, anyone from the PA Committee? No? Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Motion to approve by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Banks. If you'll call the roll, please.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Hofer.
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for the prayer. Mr. Workin. Okay. We'll move on to 3C, if the clerk will read.
C is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 841-097 Phase 6 for street improvement on Northwest Miniger Road from Green Hills Road to Rochester Road.
Okay. Braxton?
Yes, this project is in our pavement management program because it exceeds $250,000. We need specific council approval. This project is Miniger Road from Green Hills Road to Rochester Road, and was identified based on the poor pavement condition index. We would like to do a mill and overlay, and we'll do full-depth patching where necessary, and I would respectfully request your approval.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You've heard it as read. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Akala, seconded by Councilman Miller. If you will call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
And Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, motion carries.
Move to action item 3D. Brenda, if you'll read.
D is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, amending the 2024 to 2033 CIP and the 2024 to 2026 CIB to revise the scope of project number 131010 for the municipal building and T-PAC H-back improvement.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wish to comment on this particular item? Councilman Dobler?
Well, I guess, like I did in the committee meeting, I think this is one we ought to savor a little bit.
Exactly.
And not just rush through it. So I might ask Braxton a question. Braxton, it appears to me that this is a project budget that, instead of being exceeded, is 2.6 million less than originally approved, and I believe adds a few more items. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. I've had the enviable honor many times of having to come back before this governing body to ask for an increase in project budget because scope change or other items. I honestly think this is the first time I've gone in front of this governing body and asked to decrease a project budget, much less by 2.6 million dollars.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, good work, Braxton. You've heard the action item is read. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, seconded by Councilwoman Ortiz. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hiller.
Yes.
We have 10 yes, the motion carries.
And again, I'd like to thank the Public Infrastructure Committee for their work on these things. It really has been a valuable committee for the city to go through these items and bring us good recommendations for very, very good projects. And thank you, Braxton, I really appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on now to agenda item number four, non-action items. Brenda, if you'll read.
A is discussion of the proposed 2025 to 2034 CIP and the 2025 to 2027 CIB.
Mr. City Manager?
The governing body, the discussion on 4A will be brought forth by Josh McEnarty, who's the Senior Financial Analyst, and Braxton Copley, who is Public Works Director.
Braxton, when you're ready, sir.
Good. Good evening, council. We have prepared for you a presentation to provide you with an overview of the public works programs and projects that are contained in the proposed 2025 CIB. All right, the workhorse of the public works CIB is our pavement management program. The pavement management program generally focuses on mill and overlay projects with full-depth patching as necessary. In previous years, we've been right at the $9.8 million as part of this CIP. We're asking for that to be increased by $1.2 million, basically taking us right up to that $11 million range, and this is in recognition of the fact that we have PCI values that we would like to improve. I mean, we've made a yeoman's effort in terms of back in 2016. We had a PCI of 54, and then the 2022 assessment, we had raised that up to 67. We'd like to continue moving that dial up. And so, and then also, given the fact that we had a projected surplus in the ending balance of the citywide half-cent sales tax, we're asking for this increase. What I have listed here are just a few projects that we'll highlight, and the first one that I'll talk about is Southeast Sixth Street from Golden to Rice Road. This is a section of the concrete back when our specification was not as tight as it is now. If you drive that, your car will go th-thunk, 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 because every one of those joints is failing. This is absolutely a necessary project. We're spreading it out over two years because we made the commitment to research because of the amount of semi-truck traffic that they have on Sixth Street going between their facilities to always leave one lane eastbound and one lane westbound. In addition, we have a project that we're doing in coordination with the Kansas, State of Kansas, and that is on Harrison between 10th and 8th. As you know, they are doing a major construction project on their office building there, and they've agreed to share the cost of doing a mill and overlay on Harrison, so we get that restored after all the construction activity. And then just a couple other projects, 21st Adams to California, and then Southeast 30th over by Turnpike Avenue. Next program that we have is the street contract preventative maintenance. This will look very familiar to you because you saw these pictures last week when I was in front of you asking for an amendment to the 2024 to increase the street contract preventative maintenance program by a million dollars so that we can start incorporating U-BASS on our arterials. U-BASS, just as a reminder, is ultra-thin bonded asphaltic surface. And so basically, the ask is increase that funding. Again, the methodology is keep our good streets good so that we can keep those at the lowest cost, keep those good, as opposed to have to go in and rehabilitate or reconstruct. Then we have another program, which is our alley repair program, a slight increase in funding to get us up to $900,000 per year. And basically, an average alley is right at $170,000 to $175,000, and that's just to replace the pavement. And our current standard is seven inches of fiberglass reinforced concrete to be able to stand up to those trash trucks. We've done a great job in terms of alley condition assessment, and so now that we're making data-driven decisions in terms of having an objective scoring criteria, and basically, the next tranche of alleys that we have are listed on there, and then that last one, the 900 block of Southwest Western to Fillmore, this is in coordination with USD 501, who came to us and said they would really like to rehabilitate the alley, and I explained that if I looked at it just based on the condition assessment, that it wasn't warranted, and they said, well, what if we did it as a joint project? And I said, well, that kind of changes the picture of it. If I can stretch our tax dollars out, because you're willing to go 50%, I said, then absolutely I'm willing to partner with you to rehabilitate that alley. So that's what we've got on that. So that's another 2025, and that's that 900 block of Western to Fillmore. Next program that we have is the firm, which is the facilities rehabilitation firm. So you'll see that we have a large number of fire station rehabilitation projects of different types. We also have the replacement of the LEC boiler, which is the two boilers that are beyond the end of their useful life, and we rely on those for heating the building as well as to provide hot water for showers. So moving forward with that, municipal court. We have recognized for a long time that on the east side of the building, we have a challenge for disabled people to be able to get in, and so we have engaged an architect and are getting started with survey work and design to be able to provide an accessible route on the east side of the building to get into Muni Court and T-PAC. And then the last one I'll mention is in the Holiday Building, the variable air valves, which is part of the H-back system, which actually distributes the airs in the offices and conference space. Those are at the absolute end of their useful life. If you spend much time in the Holiday Building, you will know that it has an incredibly varied temperature depending on the time of the year. It could be freezing cold in there, or it could be hot, and that could be in the same week or same day. So definitely need to get that addressed. Next batch of programs that we have are the ADA sidewalk ramp, which we always partner with the infill sidewalk program to make the most bang for our buck as we're going in identifying segments that don't have sidewalk or badly damaged sidewalk. And then curb and gutter, this is one where we are actually, as part of this CIB, we're going to be amending this request and reducing it down to $900,000, just honestly because we've done a little self-assessment, and based on our staffing and the contractors that we have available, we just can't keep up with the $1.25 million. So we're going to go down to the $900,000. We do have two additional staff that we've added in the last year that are going to help us, and then we will evaluate again next year, and we will come back to you with our recommendation for the funding level on that. The sidewalk repair, that's the 50/50. I'll go into that in a little bit more detail later. And then street light replacement, this is similar to the request I made last week, which is to use those citywide half-cent sales tax funds to provide me with $100,000 a year for street light replacement as well as solar light projects when it makes the most sense for us. Then turning to our programs that are funded outside of citywide half-cent sales tax, infill sidewalk, we've mentioned, bridge maintenance. Every two years, we have to inspect all of our bridges in the city of Topeka. And our last inspection, there were a couple of that were identified, one we're actually adding as a project that I'll talk about in the project section. And then traffic safety, this is, I spend a good portion of every day handling questions relative to traffic safety and signal warrants, signs, et cetera. Traffic safety is where we fund these. If we have a complaint, we do a study, recognize that we need to add a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, or add additional signage, this is the funding source for that. And traffic signal, as I have told you guys a few times, in the last couple of years, we've seen just rampant inflation in terms of traffic signals. Currently, it's $600,000 a year to signalize an intersection. I remember when it was $200,000 a year. And so this allows us to do three intersections a year. I have 180 intersections, so even at this funding level, I'm at a 60-year replacement cycle. Traffic signals typically, depending on the engineer that you talk to, 20 to 30 years in terms of the useful life. So I'm still behind where I would like to be in terms of funding on that. And then transportation operations, fleet replacement, this is to replace my heavy equipment. If I need a motor grader, if I need to replace one of my tandem dump trucks, this is the funding source that we get, and the inflationary pressure on this never ceases to increase. So let's take a second and recap what happened this past year in the 50/50 sidewalk program. You remember, a couple of years ago, I made a significant change to the program, and that was I allowed for the city to pay the 50% portion of the sidewalk cost for qualified low-income individuals. Last year, we spent $98,000 of the $100,000 that we have allocated. This year, we spent $89,000. That remaining $10,000 will be deposited back into the citywide half-cent sales tax to be allocated next year as part of the CIP by this body. So total, we did 75 sidewalks. 60 of the owners paid their 50% share, and the city covered the other half. 15 of the applicants were approved, and the city paid both its share as well as the applicant's share for that project. And you'll see that we had 55 requests came in, of which 15 met the qualifications, seven did not. The 33 pending responses, typically, we didn't hear back from them because we asked for additional qualifying information, and they either chose not to do it, or more likely, they didn't meet the qualifications, and therefore, they did not follow back up with us. And I will thank Carrie and her group because they're the ones that do the qualifications for us. Because of their knowledge, we basically follow the same guidelines of HUD. So citywide ADA repair, again, we follow the infill sidewalk. So this is the last year of recommendations under the almost 10-year-old pedestrian plan. And this year, the target area is in High Crest, and it's specifically for Ross Elementary and Eisenhower Middle School. And specifically, the area in the PED plan is surrounding the school, so it is in the very southeast corner of High Crest around these schools, and basically, it's for adding additional infill. Been working with Rhian and her staff. We're putting together the RFP to select a consultant for the update to the PED plan, and we've had a lot of discussion about the need for the consultant to do an asset inventory of sidewalks so that we actually start to develop that. We've also talked about not having our hands tied as tight as the last PED plan in terms of laser focused in on particular areas, but also allowing for discretion and hitting areas that were not touched, because there were many, many neighborhoods, many, many NIAs that did not get any sidewalks. They weren't identified in the original PED plan. So that's it for the programs. Before I jump into the projects, any public works program questions for me?
Any questions, Councilwoman Hiller?
With a desire for remedy, I don't know if my colleagues want this, but it would be helpful to me at some point in these presentations or otherwise, of course, Josh or you, to tell us where to find this information in our books so that we can follow.
Okay.
So it's a new format, and I've been through it once, but trying to tie where to find these things would be helpful.
So when Josh comes up to kick off the next item, I'll let him, before we close out of the presentation, since he's the one that put the book together, I'll let him walk you all through that in terms of how to, where to find it, how to look at it.
Have a, is this an answer still to?
Oh, I was just going to say, I don't know, I couldn't remember if we put it on the top right of the slide for the utility. If it's not there, for the utilities, one next week, we'll add it. That was my bad. If we didn't include a page number, but on page, let me see. Oh, it is on the slide.
So I go back to slide four for pavement management?
I see page 53, 57. Pretty good.
I got that one.
Okay.
I didn't print the slides, and so I don't have anything to take with me.
And then one more thing I'll add, on pages 29, 30, and 31, it's a scheduled project list for the next five, or scheduled program list for the next five years, so it lists the bridge maintenance program, its level of funding, and the page number. So that's on pages, what he just covered was 29 and 30, pages 29 and 30 in your book.
Thank you.
No worries.
And then while you're here, you might want to just go through the pages for the projects. It's going to be the next part of the.
Yeah, good point. So on Braxton's next portions, pages, and this is in no particular order, but we kind of broke it out into certain sections. So page 31 are the Jado projects, so those are projects that can only be used under, or be funded with countywide half-cent sales tax money. And then the specific project pages that he's about to discuss is on page 32. So for example, if when he discusses South Kansas, 10th to 17th, that would be adjacent on the, if you go over on the rows, it's page 127 on the far right column.
Thanks. I can follow that, just being able to be in the book.
Yeah, no worries.
So effectively, Josh created a little index for all of the programs and projects so that you can, at a glance, find the page number to go in and do a deep dive into that program or project CIP page.
Yeah, that's all right.
This is where that is, right? The only place there's an index.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akala, and then Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Braxton, just a quick question. The remainder that was put on, that was left over of a little over $10,000 for the 50/50, I cannot recall if I've asked you this before, when there is funding remaining, does it roll over to the next year or no?
No, ma'am. There have been a lot of, we faced a lot of criticism for having unspent money that was sitting around. So the position that we have now is we will take that money, put it back into the citywide half-cent sales tax fund, and then next year, when you come back.
back in front, when we come back in front of you, we will be presenting our CIB and asking for the allocation of those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, Josh did an awesome job. It's easy to read this new format, and I've seen a lot of it, and you and your team has done a great job to make this understandable. So, I just wanted to say that. And if you can't kind of go through the map there, that's what I call it, then just get ahold of him. He'll be happy to, he put this together. I think he's sleeping and dreaming about it. So, anyway. Braxton, I want to thank you for talking about Southeast Sixth Street from Golden to Rice Road. I hope my colleagues would get a chance to drive out there, because he described it to a T, the thump, the thump, the thump, the thump. I made him drive me, what was it, out to Rice Road and back, and, didn't we drive that? Or maybe it was me and the city manager. I've taken so many people on that. They, it was Carrie, city manager, another city manager that we have. Did I go with you, Braxton? I don't know, but that's exactly what it is. And exactly on 21st and Adams, from Adams to California, it's the same way. So, I hope my colleagues would, would vote for this, because it's much needed. I always say that East 6 is the gateway to Topeka, from all those people coming in from Lawrence. And it's just terrible. It makes you just hold on to your car while you're driving it. So, you don't have to go far. You can start at Golden, where they all start, and when it rains, all the things wash away, the potholes, and start there at Golden, go to Rice Road, and you'll probably take another, another street back. But, it's much needed. So, I just wanted to bring that. And thank you for pointing that out. My NIA will probably quit scolding you and having, inviting you, and we'll appreciate that you, that you did that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments or questions? Braxton?
Thank you. Switching from programs over to specific projects, the first one that I want to talk about is Topeka Boulevard, and that's from 15th to 21st. This is one of those that is funded by the JDO countywide half-cent sales tax. So, this particular sales tax can be used for complete street items, can be used for utilities. And we have engaged a consultant, and the first thing that we're having the consultant do is put together a couple of high-level cost estimates that we can come in front of you to get some guidance on which direction you want us to go. And currently, we're looking at two different plans. One would be the full-blown plan, that would include all complete streets, items, sidewalk, bike lane, shared-use path, lights, trees, full-depth reconstruction, full replacement of storm. And then, we're also looking at a scaled-back plan that would be largely Millen overlay, would be replacement of badly damaged storm pipe, badly damaged curb. Basically, it would be the sort of lowest that we would, could reasonably recommend to you, and then, basically, put that in front of you to get some policy direction from which way you want us to go, so that, you know, there's a major policy decision made by the governing body, and that is, as you'll remember, when we did our JDO presentation, based on the current construction costs and the projected amount of revenue that we have on the countywide half-cent sales tax, we can't fully fund all of the items that we had. And so, decision needs to be made whether we leave projects out, or whether we reduce the scope. And that's, that's not our decision. We'll give you some options and give you a recommendation, but ultimately, that needs to be made by this body. So, that's the first of the projects, which is Topeka Boulevard, 15th to 21st. This one is planned for design this year, and then, construction in '25 and '26. We will need both of those years, because we, there are a lot of businesses along this corridor, and we need to be able to keep those businesses open. So, that means we're going to have to phase it in a way that will allow for people to get access to the businesses, which will, will add time, which is why we're planning on the two-year construction.
Braxton, refresh my memory, please. I know you talked about the solar-powered lighting. Is that a different, specific area, or is that considered part of this rehabilitation of this roadway?
This particular roadway, there's already existing Evergy lights. If we went with lights, we'd probably go with electrical lights through, through this corridor. Typically, we would reserve the solar for areas where Evergy power was not readily available, or where we had other overriding needs. For example, security, like the stretch of Sixth over by Fairlon, where we've had the copper stolen out of the lights and all the conduit two different times.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next project is Topeka Boulevard, 29th to 38th. This is citywide half-cent sales tax. This is contemplated to be Millen overlay with full-depth patching where necessary. And this project is planned for '26 and '27 with design in '25. And we will, as part of this, we will be completely reconstructing the intersections of 29th and 37th. We'll reconstruct those in concrete, because they stand up much better to deter movements, particularly heavy vehicles, as well as we will be replacing the traffic signals at these intersections. Next individual project that we have is South Kansas Avenue from 10th to 17th. This is one where we are actually having to push the project back for two reasons. One is, I can't close Kansas Avenue from 10th to 17th when I'm reconstructing Topeka Boulevard, 15th to 21st, right? It doesn't work when I close two major arterials that run parallel to each other, right? So, you know, people always ask me the question, well, don't you think about what you're doing? And yes, we've spent a great deal of time with this little jigsaw puzzle of trying to figure out what we can have closed at this time, and keep this open, and still have a good safety to our route. The other reason that we're pushing this back is because of Polquincy Viaduct. There's going to be just a tremendous amount of pressure on our roads because of the closures of Polquincy Viaduct. And again, I can't have, I need to make sure that I always have the ability to get people to move to and through the downtown. 29th, from Burlingame to Topeka, again, scope is going to be limited, Millen overlay, curb replacement, localized, or full-depth repair where needed, and localized curb replacement where needed. Next one is a project that we're partnering with the county on. Total project cost estimated to be 5.5 million. Our portion of the, of the project is only $1 million, and that's being funded out of citywide half-cent sales tax. Basically, it's to do the improvements on Auburn, from the 29th Street up to K4, yeah, to K4. And we had our consultant take a look at it, and the existing footprint of our pavement, once you remove and replace that, comes out to that $1 million. The county will be bearing the cost of the additional work that falls outside of the footprint, which is shared-use path, sidewalk, curb and gutter. Our contribution is existing pavement, which is why we can use the citywide half-cent sales tax. Huntune, we have engaged our consultant for Huntune. Again, this is a countywide half-cent sales tax, so the same comments that I made earlier relative to the Boulevard. First thing that we're going to do is have the consultant put together some high-level cost estimates and scope, so that we can get in front of you in terms of which direction you want us to go. We are going to have at least one public engagement meeting, so that we can bring some of the comments from that public engagement meeting to you, so you have those to sift through, as well as you're looking at the options, and then providing us direction of which way do you want to go. But I really don't want to get way out in front of this in terms of having a lot of public engagement without having some good direction from you as the policy board in terms of what this project looks like. And certainly, the two ends of the spectrum are something like 12th Street, which was street trees, lights, sidewalk, curb gutter, all of that ADA improvements. The other end is the least amount of work necessary to make the street functional, largely Millen overlay with necessary repairs. So, more, much, much more to come on Huntune over the next several years, but contemplated for public engagement, getting your direction in '24, '25, design, '26, utility relocation, then '27, '28, and '29 for construction. Next project was a project.
Okay.
Next project was added during the CIP process last year, and that was recognizing that there is no sidewalk on Lyman Road from Vale to Tyler. So, this will be '24, doing a high-level traffic study to give us an idea of what the road needs to look like. And then, '25, right-of-way, and '26, construction for a sidewalk along this stretch of road. And then, the street project will follow along behind, and that's currently slated for 2029 for the street project, which is why we need to have the study now, because I need to know where to put the sidewalk, if this needs to be a three-lane road, or if indeed, two lanes is going to be sufficient. And then, 29th, Kansas to Adams, again, Millen overlay, full-depth patch, base patching where needed, curb and gutter replacement where needed. And we will do a new signal Fairlon is one that we are working with the utilities on. This section of Fairlon has some failing corrugated metal pipe, which is under pavement. We've had to do a couple of emergency repairs over the last few years on that. So, we are happy to finally get this one rocking and rolling. Just got fuel check plans on the stormwater side, so it will be later this summer, we'll get started on storm, and this will be, basically, half of the road will have to be ripped up for massive box to get, carry the stormwater under what is now the two southbound lanes. And then, we will follow up with the pavement work, which will necessarily have to be pushed over to 2025. And then, Sardu, as part of the bridge assessment that we had done, we recognize that we have some issues on the Sardu Bridge that we need to replace the deck. We'll be doing some structural steel repair, replace the concrete approaches as well, and that work is construction out 2027, and design in 2025 and 2026. Since we're going to be doing some work on the Branner Bridge next year, obviously, I can't have both of those bridges. I can't land lock Oakland. So, one at a time, and again, we, we obviously think about what projects we're doing, and making sure that we always have accessibility. And I appreciate your bearing with me for this rather long presentation, but obviously, I'm excited about our programs and projects, and want to tell you the story, so you guys have the same excitement that I do. The last one that I'm going to touch upon is Golden, which was, again, added to the CIP last year. We recognized that we had an area where we had pedestrians, but didn't have a sidewalk. And so, Ice, Golden, south of I-70 down to 21st, we're going to add a sidewalk on that, and then, to tie into the existing sidewalk that we have on the north side of I-70. And with that, I'll gladly stand for any questions over the projects or programs.
Thank you, Councilman Kell.
So, I was curious on the, on the two of our projects, why are we jumping from 21st to 29th, when that, that range in between there, it seems just as bad, and we're not kind of going down the road and getting this project all done at once? Because it seems kind of, kind of productive to work on a road, then have a bad chunk, and then, a nice chunk again. I just, and this is what I'm hearing from citizens also. It just seems like we're, we're just patching blocks together, and instead of just going down, doing all at once, getting knocked out, and not have to worry about, let's say, Topeka Boulevard being shut down for another 15 years or so for that stretch of road. It seems like it'd be a lot more productive to go down the road in sections and knock it all out.
Okay. So, thank you, thank you for that. First and foremost, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that this summer, from 21st through the intersection of 29th, will be done. So, we will be doing that entire corridor from 21st to 29th, right? So, that's the starting point. We're not just going to do the intersection at 21st and the intersection 29th. We're going to be doing the whole thing. I've got two different funding sources, two different projects, so I'm doing them at different times this summer, but by the end of this summer, 21st to 29th will be done. Okay? Then, I am generally limited to what can be done by a contractor in a construction season to about a half-mile chunk when it comes to a major arterial. So, in terms of what I can do, I can't, I don't want to have five different contractors trying to do the entire five-mile stretch, because that would be a recipe for disaster. They, the citizens would be even more upset than just doing it at a half-mile at a time, if I had the whole thing closed, right? And also, I've got other things going on, utility projects that I need to coordinate to make sure that we can get access to that, as well as to other street projects that I have on arterials. So, there is a little method to my madness in terms of what I'm, which segments that I'm, that I'm doing.
Now, on, when we go, before we do these, I know there's traffic studies and other things all worked out through there. Is there anything dealing with drainage and rainwater and things like that? Because I was screaming and yelling about five, six years ago, before 37th, between Burlingame and up to Walmart, before it was done, that drainage needed to be put in there. And it wasn't done, and this was on the council. And it seems like that road down was all torn up again, because all the water that lays on that road when it rains, becomes a humongous puddle in front of a crete. You hydroplane, all this kind of stuff. So, is that kind of stuff looked at? Like, you know, does anyone go out before it rains and says, okay, maybe this is something we need to look at on this project a little bit better? Because I feel like that project was done great, except for that one part, and now that one part is causing issues to that road again.
So, the, the starting point is, to the best of our ability, we try to address the issues that we can. Sometimes, we don't have a funding source to address those issues. For example, if all I have is citywide half-cent sales tax, I can't go in and put a bunch of new storm sewer, right? Because I can't, I legally cannot fund that. So, I would reach out to utilities. The example I'll give you is one of the projects that you approved tonight, and that's Elm Road. Utilities did their inspection, recognized that they have half a million dollars of work and things in terms of pipe that needs to be replaced, structures that are bad, to be able to make improvements. So, some projects, it's not stormwater, it's groundwater. For example, Wanamaker, the roundabout of Wanamaker and Sixth, we had bad pavement degradation, and that was because of underground water that was moving through there. Same thing down on the section on 37th, between Fairlon and Wanamaker. That was one where it was not properly designed, and so, we had to add a whole bunch of underdrains to be able to get that moved. So, the short answer is, yes, we tried, tried to look at that. Are we perfect? Do we get it right? Always, first time, no. I think that over time, we're doing a much better job now than we did 10 years ago, or 20 years ago, in terms of trying to address those, trying to address those issues, those larger issues to have a successful project.
Thank you, Braxton. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any comments or questions? Councilman Duncan?
So, I know nobody wants to move this stuff faster than you. You could just get it done. Your sense of urgency is way more than ours, and I know that. But I guess my question is, I'm going to use a, I guess, a fake example for this question. I'll use a real street. But so, like on, let's just say, the stretch of Kansas Avenue, that we know needs some work, but has to be delayed because of Polquincy and other projects going on. Just using that as, is there any temporary fix? I mean, because I hate that we have to send crews out to some of these roads every week to keep doing, you know, not the same pothole, but a new pothole, because the road is, and we've got them on here. They're in '28, or '29, or even '27. But I mean, is there anything, I guess, a permanent temporary fix, knowing that it'll last for two years or so, that we can do on some of those stretches to sort of reduce the workloads of the crews? the workloads of the crews and, you know, make people feel a little better while you're doing the work as fast as you can? And I honestly don't know, because I always say I, this is not my area of expertise.
Right. So I'll give you two good examples. One is 17th from I-470 to McVicker. That was one where, five years ago, they went in and did a mill and overlay. Well, typically, you get 10 years out of a mill and overlay, right? So that was one where they did the mill and overlay. Our PCI actually is pretty, pretty good on that stretch right now, other than the center turn lane where they didn't do it. And so that's why I came to you guys last year and said, you know what? I think 17th, I-470 to McVicker is in pretty good shape. I think we can get five more years out of that. Let's move up Topeka Boulevard, 15th to 21st, which is way beyond its useful life, and let's make that a higher priority. And then we have Huntune, again, is one that we are going to do a mill and overlay on, and we're going to push the project out 10, 10 years, right? Because we should be able to get 10 years out of that useful life, and I'm not seeing traffic counts that are warranting going to a three-lane section at this time. So there's a couple of examples where, yes, we, there are some intermediate steps that we can take to at least get that PCI into a good range. Again, I don't like to just go in and do a mill and overlay unless I can extend, use up the life of that. Thank you.
Further questions for Braxton? Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say with the 12th Street and the Huntune Project, the constituents that I've spoken with, they want to see Huntune look like 12th. It's, it's completely different right now, obviously, because this is a brand-new street. I mean, I think with the, the awards we were able to win with that, I believe that we can be a, a, a good beacon of what streets are supposed to look like when we have two roads looking the same right here. And that can just further push other roads and other neighborhoods to think that this is the right way to go when it comes to the road. So I want to make sure that my thought is heard, that in 27, 28, 29, when we do this, my hope is that Huntune looks just like 12th Street does.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other remarks? Braxton, done a good job lining it all up for us. Do you have further presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on to non-action item 4B. If the clerk will read.
B is discussion regarding the use of excess funds from unreserved fund balances.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor and governing body, Rochelle Matthews, our interim finance director, will lead this discussion with you and present a plan for our, for the surplus that we're talking about. And I think this is a discussion night, not an action night.
Correct. Okay.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and governing body. Based on the feedback from last week, what we have done is broken out the surplus into a presentation for you tonight. So first, I would like to start with a slide to illustrate some of the general fund impacts that Councilman Dobler was inquiring last week. So all of these percentages have been updated to reflect the changes in the surplus list. So the budget team has pulled together a snapshot of where we have been the last three years. The 2023 line would be inclusive of the items that you are considering as part of this package, where we would end the year at 27 and a half percent in our reserve level. But I really do think it's important to keep in mind where we're going to be at the end of also this fiscal year, most notably where we moved the firm project into a cash-funded surplus item as part of the operating budget. So I think the number that we really want to focus on is that 23.7, 24% there, where we're going to be at the end of fiscal year '24. So moving on from that, we, here is your updated list. I will save you my voice of rereading the list and just note the items that have changed. The auto self-insurance fund item was reduced from $2 million to $1. We have added an item for the fire department that is for the prepayment of the fire radio lease that was executed last year. We have also added half a million dollars for T-PAC catapult improvements, and we have removed the second risk funding transfer item. So your new total is the 8.3 million noted on this slide. So to get into more detail of this project, I would like to invite some of my colleagues up to the table to help articulate these. So first up is our fleet building, and I would turn to Director Kopley.
So as discussed last week, the need is for a new fleet garage. I will, a couple of updates. One is that myself and staff toured the Sears garage on Friday. We were impressed. We are putting together our list of items to present to the owner in terms of what we would need for a two-to-three-year short-term lease in terms of the improvements that they would need to make to that, to that space. But knock on wood, hopefully, we have a temporary home. Then the other really good news is KDOT reached out yesterday morning and informed me that they have now increased the offer to $2.8 million, leaving us at a delta of $2.7 million. We do still have two other items that are in front of them for consideration that might possibly get us another $600,000 in terms of, of the reduction. So this, when Rochelle says not to exceed, it's truly not to exceed because I've already knocked it down.
Any, any questions for Braxton? Braxton, what's the anticipated, if we move forward with the Sears building as our temporary? I know it's maybe jumping the gun. How soon can we start moving? Because I know that we're on a short timeline for the first quarter of next year to be moved out of there. Do you have an idea at all?
Right. So I've reached out to KDOT and said, you know, we've, we've agreed that Q1, but we haven't really talked about, is that day one of Q1 or is that day 90 of Q1? So asking for guidance on them, and then hopefully, we can negotiate something that's, that's reasonable in terms of what, what that date looks like. Because to me, Q1 means March 31st, but to KDOT, Q1 probably means January 1st.
Thank you. Okay. Proceed.
Next up on the agenda item is the hotel capital expenditures in the amount of $2 million specifically to address items that were noted in the property condition assessment. And again, I would turn it over to Director Kopley to provide additional context on this item.
So we provided additional detailed information relative to cost estimates and items that came out of the 400-page property condition assessment. So the first page is basically a million dollars of items that were identified as immediate needs. The next two pages are $7 million of items that were identified as capital reserve, capital needs over a five-year window. And so the $2 million basically allows us to address the million dollars upfront of immediate capital needs, as well as some of the more compelling items off of the second two pages, of which I've, I went through and highlighted the ones that jump out at me, including building envelope, roofs, the air handler over the ballroom, those, those items that would be significant. The, the first ask, if this is funded, the first ask that we will come in front of you is for $200,000 for the rehabilitation of the train chiller that is not working. So there are two chillers in Hotel Topeka. Most commercial buildings have two chillers, and they are sized such that one chiller can just about take over the need even during the hottest summer days, but usually you have to kick on both chillers. But you want two chillers because God forbids you need to take a chiller down in July because it's broken or you need to service it, you need to have an operational chiller to provide. Right now, Hotel Topeka doesn't have that. If the 30-year-old York chiller were to go down on a hot July day, there was no backup plan other than the few windows that are operable to open those. Okay? So it's, this is a critical need, so I just kind of want to paint the picture in terms of the one that, the most compelling thing that we need to do, that will be back in front of you if, if you guys approve the use of, of these funds for this purpose, but we will come back separately on, on those. So you don't, don't think that this is just a carte blanche approval and go spend $2 million tomorrow, because we will come back to you on, on any of those requests.
Thank you. Questions? Go ahead.
All right. Next up is a paint truck rehabilitation. And again, I would defer to Braxton to discuss this Public Works item.
So one of the major assets that we have in our trans-op division is our long-line painting machine. So this machine is, it only has 24,000 miles on it. Ooh. You might want to lock that top down before the next person comes up. Otherwise, he's flipped his laptop in the back row. So, so we might include this on the capital need assessment as well, new, new, new tables for the muni court, so. But bottom line is, this is a wise investment, $120,000 to rehabilitate this, to get us 10-plus years for use of this machine. Engine's good, chassis is good, Jesus, it's on 24,000 miles. Brand-new paint machine, $400,000. This is a wise investment to rehab this machine, to get it and get us to have the ability to paint long lines. My guys, with this spring weather coming, would love to get approval on this item so that they can get it on the road to the manufacturer to be started on the rehabilitation. And with that, I'll gladly stand for any questions on my three items. I know you guys are tired of listening to me and I'll let someone else talk.
Councilman Dobler.
Braxton, would it be possible to just run the short-line truck like twice as much?
That would be Kansas spring.
Our next item is the IT switch project in the amount of $790,000. This would be to upgrade a large number of switches within our network, and I've asked Deputy Director Beggs to join us to help provide context on this item.
Good evening. This is a replacement of approximately 125 switches that operate throughout nearly all 147 physical locations within the city. The bulk of them are within the core operations centers, which would be City Hall, Holiday Building, and the Law Enforcement Center. The rest of them are distributed at locations throughout the city, including all of the fire stations, water pump stations, water towers, and so on. The switches that are in place now have been in place for approximately eight and a half years. A normal useful life is about five years or 4,400, 44,000 hours. We're at about 75,000 hours on these switches. The switches themselves act as roadway and traffic cop for all of the data and information and applications that occur within the city structure. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No, appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, Councilman Miller?
These new switches, they would, they're expected to be five years, or these new ones would be a little longer than that?
All switches are expected to be five years. The brand that we've, we've selected to go with has a little bit more reliable length of life service. 10 years that we're approaching now is really pretty much unheard of, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hillary.
I know you switched to an IT fund a couple of years ago. Is this item already, was it already budgeted in the fund?
As far as I can tell, no. We are still trying to understand the algorithm that was used for that IT fund and to try to reconstruct some of that. At this time, the, the large capital expenditures, as far as we can tell, are not included.
Well, then, phew. I was hoping it was relieving $790,000, but if it's not, okay, thank you.
If I may. Rochelle. And I think that this item has been a great interaction between finance and IT. And so while that has not been built in the past, these items and other items like it are being built into the CIP project and the operating budget so that we can set ourselves on a reasonable replacement cycle where we're not replacing everything all at once. So that is the plan moving forward, regardless of what has been done in the past.
Thank you.
Good plan. Anything further? City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. What happens to the switches that we're switching out? Is there salvage value to them?
At this point in time, there'd be limited salvage value. We will call an electronics recycler because there is some data on there that we wouldn't necessarily want to just let loose of.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is the LMA, LMI Property and Maintenance Rehab Funding. This was an item that was brought through the Public Health and Safety Committee and to, before this governing body as a presentation earlier this year. So I have asked Director Friedman to come helping provide a little follow-up context for what we've already discussed on this one.
Thank you. So yes, through changing our culture of property maintenance, property maintenance code in housing has worked really closely with Federal Home Loan Bank on a three-year rolling grant for $750,000. The current grant that we have goes through mid-2025, and the grant's purpose is to help LMI households try to, try to fix some of the property code violations that they have. There are some limitations to the grant when it comes to the areas. 50% of those people have to be within their defined help area, which leaves a little bit of a gap that was identified. And then also, we often had code violations that are tied to garages or secondary structures on the property. So, same, sorry. She'll learn from Braxton. But anyways, so I think the hope is that we would be able to utilize these funds to help fill that gap and get people off the waitlist, helping both housing and property code maintenance with some of those outstanding issues.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Hannah.
All right. Well, we work on the table here. I'll move on to the next item. This item is for $605,000 for the prepayment of a Topeka Fire Department radio lease, based on feedback from governing body. Finance did consult with the city manager and the public safety team to determine if there were any needs that would fit the surplus type of criteria. And this happened to be a good project. This was a lease we entered into last year to fund five years' worth of radios for the fire department. And the terms of the lease also offer us the option to prepay once a year, which would allow us to use this cash to pay off the funding and then save the interest cost and that budgeted amount in the fire department's budget for '25, '26, and '27, or the remaining term of the lease.
I like that note that you're saving over $52,000 in interest by doing that. Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Next up is the auto self-insurance funding. This would be a transfer out of the general fund into our auto insurance fund to establish a reserve for those years that had higher-than-expected claim experience or a claim that involved one of our larger apparatuses, such as a fire truck or a larger piece of equipment. I believe I touched on last week, our 2023 experience, in our first year of being self-funded, we experienced about half a million dollars of average claim experience. So this million dollars would equate to about a year, year and a half worth of reserves under normal claims, or one to maybe two larger claims on a, on a bigger piece of equipment. Next up is an amount not to exceed $500,000 for the Topeka Performing Arts Center capital improvements. Inside your packet, we included a list of preliminary requests and categories for this amount. This would be a city project to be run by Public Works in conjunction with other ongoing projects at T-PAC. projects at T-PAC, including the HVAC remodel and, and the outside ADA ramp that Braxton referenced earlier. So, I would also defer to Councilman Duncan for any additional comment he would have on this item.
So I'm gonna reserve my begging, I mean, requesting here for a few minutes until we have a little more discussion on the package as a whole. I also am willing to offer an alternative suggestion as we talk about this a little bit, so I'm gonna pass for the moment, Mayor. Thank you.
So as we wrap up these items, there's a couple things I wanted to point out, as these items are, a lot of them are not to exceed, and they're for capital projects. Any amounts not used by these projects would be returned to the general fund to either add to the, to the fund balance, or have, you all would have a chance to then redeploy or reallocate those funds. So they would not sit in these projects forever. That money does come back to the general fund.
Good, thank you. Anything further, Rochelle?
No, sir.
On this item? Okay, Councilman Duncan, is this the point where you want to make comment? Okay. Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Councilman Duncan, let me speak first. So I'm gonna go down a, a little bit of a path here with your indulgence. I think the first slide we saw talked about the, the, the reserve percentage set by council, and I believe that was set a number of years ago, 15%. Also noted a target of 20%, and clearly, we've exceeded that by many, many percentage points over the last two or three years, and that's, I mean, that's a situation that, as I recall, the city hasn't faced in a long, long time. I am uncomfortable with where we're at. I, I think, I don't have, I can't point out any single one of these items that I disagree with. I think they're probably all good, good options for spending that excess money. What I would like to do is develop a process where we can move excess funding into something, I would call it a ready reserve, as opposed to the reserve that meets the statutory requirement, and then if, and have limitations on what the, what that fund can be used for, one-time only, preferably equipment, maintenance, those type of things, things that would, that would let us not have to bond other projects, all those kind of things. But I think when one of these items come up, city staff could look at, does that fit an existing line item in this year's budget? If not, another option would be this ready reserve, there's probably a better term for that. So what I'm gonna ask the council to think about a little bit, and what I'd like to do is ask the city attorney to draft a resolution that basically says that, at whatever point in the, early in the year, the point we're at now where we close the books, I guess, to use my term, and we know what the excess funding is, that anything over 20% reserves will go into a fund, a ready reserve fund, that is eligible for any of these items, but instead of hitting us with all of them all at once, they could, it could be played out over the year. As those projects come up, city manager brings those in front of us for approval or not. We would also get some, some sort of accounting for where that fund stands. I think the, I think one advantage to that is, we're not gonna spend all of that in March, March, April, May of every year, it's a lot of it's gonna play out towards the end of the year. And, you know, if, if another catastrophe hits us where that 20% reserve starts looking a little, little iffy, we would have additional reserve out there. So, that's my thought process at this point. Again, I would like to ask the city attorney to draft a resolution. I don't know if we'll be able to consider that next week. I'd like to set it at 20%. Anything over 20% goes into that ready reserve fund, can be used for these type of projects, definitely one-time cost. Those would be brought in front of us one at a time for consideration. I think that, that to me just feels like a better process than getting this all at once. These could certainly be brought to us fairly quickly if we pass this. I think we can probably, I mean, you could bring these to us right now and just identify reserves as, as the funding source, but that's what I've got in mind. Be open to any, any comments on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you for that thought. I guess I'm thinking a little bit bigger picture here. I've been on this council for 15 years. It's the first time we've ever had any money. You know, when I first came on, we were going into the economic crisis in 2009 and 2010, at which point, the, the process that we have, we never had anything left over to talk about, to speak of, maybe once or twice a little bit, and then last year for the first time. And so doing our capital budget first, that was the only place we could fund big projects, and so we knew we didn't have it in the operating budget, so we focused on, actually moved the CIP budget consideration to the spring before the operating budget, instead of afterward, the way it had been done for years. But when I look at this excess, and I look at, and I think about what's in our budget, and I look at the CIP, I think of a comment that you made last week about maybe increasing the debt limit. When I, when I think about that all together, what I think about is, is, we've got a lot of vacant staff positions, you know, we're, we're going into CIP. If we can pay cash for these, for anything that is on this list or considered in the CIP, if our, if our operating income is enough to accommodate that in cash out of the operating budget, I want us to be thinking about that right now, because it's tempting if you've got just a fund, which, which I hadn't thought of, but anyway, and I'll consider anything, it's tempting to have, to have it be extra. But as long as we still, it's a desperately need to do our street projects, you know, to really fix them, instead of just patch potholes, and finally reduce the, the property ma, the pavement maintenance budget, because we really have our streets in order and so on, I'd like us to be thinking ahead to how we can use, if, if our projections from Josh and, and then the rest of the department are that, that, that we expect to have the kind of revenue that we've had before, you know, thinking about whether we need our budget the same next year or maybe a little bit less. Does that allow that $8 million to go every year to the capital projects that we have? It's hard to make that in order, but I'd like us to be thinking ahead to that operating budget and the CIP budget, be, to perhaps apply these dollars to those budgets. We have plenty of needs. I don't see that as a tax deduction. I just see that as deploying the dollars so that we're borrowing as little as possible, we're getting on top of our buildings and our streets, which we're still playing catch-up with, and actually plan them into our budget. So, it's just off the top of my head.
Thank you. Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't even know what he was gonna say when I tossed it to him, so that's always a scary proposition, right? You never know. But, good news is, I like the idea. I think that it gives us some flexibility with those funds, especially since it's a different amount every year. I think I said at one point, I know, at least every year since I've been on the council, we've had at least about $3 million or more surplus at the end of the year, and so it gives us the flexibility to, to figure out what that's gonna look like without this rush of getting it done, and give staff some stability too, to know they can come and ask for it. As it relates to my T-PAC request, it doesn't give me heartburn, because it means we're putting the money aside, and then I can just keep harassing you about it for the next several weeks, until you take it out of that fund. The alternative I was gonna offer tonight, though, too, just to think about, whether it comes from that fund or else is, my concern with T-PAC has been, it's the only major facility that we own that is not part of our general maintenance plan in this CIP, right? We still give money to the zoo, we make sure we take the police and fire and parts of City Hall and all of our major buildings, except that one has no consistent ability that has been integrated into this CIP. So my alternative request will be, as we move through that process, is to give them some five-year stability, starting in '25, of roughly about $300,000, $325,000 a year over the next five years, which gives them about $1,006,000 over that period, to solve a lot of the problems they have, and get us from stop playing from behind with that part of the building for once, which has, they've been behind for probably 15 years. And that gives them stability to do some actual planning as to what those costs and expenses are over the next five years, and where to put that money, goes through the process, goes to the infrastructure committee, it's still very structured, as opposed to me coming here every year and begging for these willy-nilly dollars in these little spurts. And so, that is my alternative also suggestion as we work through this CIP that I will put in front of everybody, as opposed to just this $500,000 one-time amount to resolve that problem. So, so I like Councilman Dobler's idea, and it, it keeps my dream alive to help T-PAC, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Neo, where did you get the 20% at? Where'd you get that at? Is that something you just threw out there? And to Spencer, Spencer, as long as I've been on this council, I've always heard T-PAC say that they were gonna be self-sufficient, they were gonna do better, they were gonna do better, and that's never happened. And so that's why a maintenance plan is not in place. They talked about the programs and how they were gonna do better. They've always struggled with, with that, you know? And I, I think, I think with me hearing that for so long, when I first gone on and hearing that, that they were gonna be self-sufficient, and that's never happened, and them coming back all the time, and I do realize that it's our facility and we should take some type of ownership, but that was always a promise, and that's never happened, even, even with regards to the type of programs that they bought in here, that, that sell and that don't sell. So I think we need to look at all of that. At least, that's, that's how I feel, and that's how I've always looked at it.
Councilman Dobler.
Yeah, so part of that long-term plan has been because we've made a choice, and I don't mean T-PAC, I mean, this council has made a choice to keep that building for the community to some degree. And so I'll give you an example. Mannheim Steamroller comes to Topeka. They would love to come to T-PAC, but because T-PAC has two nutcrackers, three nutcrackers every year, which are community-based, they give up what is a guaranteed hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue of Mannheim Steamroller, so that Ballet Midwest, Ballet, you know, Topeka Ballet, the Chocolate Nutcracker can all use that facility. So part of the ongoing balance T-PAC had is, if we told them today, forget it, you go hardcore, performance-only, whatever you can bring in these doors and make money, they could do it, but our direction to them as a government is, no, 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 we want you to be community-oriented too. And with that comes an offset of lost revenue. So that has been their ongoing battle as to what that balance is, as to why they end up coming back to us. And so if we're gonna continue to want that to be that building, then they're gonna continue to have to come back and make those ass, until we decide as a council, we'd like them to shift direction, and I think that's where they're at on that.
That's only one entity, though. That's only one month, one entity.
There, there's others throughout the year. There are a lot of dance recitals, in fact, that's why.
No, I understand that, but I'm talking about bringing more programs that people want to see and want to, and want to go to. You know, people don't wanna come here, they'd rather go to Kansas City and spend money and stuff like that, you know, than, than to come here because of the programs that, that they offer here.
Right, but what I'm telling you is, it's, it's a, it's a conflict of calendars. Every time they give up a date to a local group, that's a date where those other groups say, well, if you don't have that window available, we can't come to Topeka, because they travel through the, so, and we can talk about it more, but.
We sure will.
But that's been the bound, that's been the struggle they've had.
We sure will, Spencer.
Councilman Dobler.
Yeah, to answer your question, can we put the slideshow back up, the, the very first slide for Rochelle's presentation? Yeah, so the, the two right-hand columns, I, I think the policy limit of 15%, trying to maintain 15% reserves was set 2008 or '09 or something in there. I believe it used to be 10%. I, I recall when reserves were like 7% or 8%.
I recall that, too.
That was a long time ago. So, the policy, the set policy's 15%. I think finance's target amount, they'd like a little cushion, which I don't blame them, is 20%, so that's, that's where the 20% came from. We've been at 27%, almost 28% some years. And if I might, Mayor, I'd like to add one thing I, I forgot to mention. I think if, if this process moves forward, I think it would make sense for, for the projects, before they come to the council, they go to probably the Policy and Finance Committee makes the, makes the most sense and get vetted there, and then come to council for approval. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I had some feedback for Spencer about the specific proposal a little earlier. You know, this really is a grant proposal. Councilwoman Ortiz is right, they were set up to be what we call otherwise an enterprise fund. You know, we were providing facilities, and we didn't do a good job, fair enough, but it's been a long time since we've had a full report from them, and I know that we've had in the past where they'll take a five-year run, kinda like we do in our own budgeting and show what the past three years were, what the current year is, and what they're looking at. And when I saw this, I mean, the whole, this whole $325,000 to redo the Black Box Theater, I've never seen before, and maybe it was somewhere in what was a pretty extensive list that I recall of all the repairs and equipment improvements and things that they absolutely needed and hoped for, whatever that run was at T-PAC, and I'm not current. So, when I checked with Spencer, I said, you know, I remember they needed a new tech board, and they needed a new curtain. Where are they on those essential things to run the main house? And they needed, you know, new carpeting and paint and refresher on the, on the walls and the rooms upstairs, so they could have events there and have those side spaces. I don't know where they are on that, and I don't know where these items fit in a priority list either. I don't know what their revenue projections look like. They're good at putting together that sort of thing, and I guess before I would consider, just like if it was a nonprofit or an ARPA grant or whatever, to see an, an application, an idea if, for instance, we were gonna invest in the, in the Black Box Theater. To me, it's, it's a little easier to get some grants elsewhere for arts development for something like redoing a theater than putting a new curtain on your main stage, for instance. So to see what they, if they want that kind of investment, just like we would ask somebody else, what kind of, what's their business plan for that Black Box Theater? Is it gonna make money? I, I don't, we don't have any of that information in terms of how they're gonna use it and, and how it would improve activity downtown, all, all those things that hopefully are there, but I'd like to see either, maybe not right away, but, you know, a full proposal with some backup information, because they are an affiliate of ours in effect, before we would move forward with a, a grant. That doesn't mean that depending on how this goes, I wouldn't mind reserving some dollars if, and, until we have a chance to see it, but I think we need it. Thank you.
Okay. Go for this. Councilman Miller.
I mean, I, I understand exactly that arts can be a very fickle thing, and so trying to make sure that we have revenue and trying to be self-sustaining can be extremely hard for them. I, I, I really like the thought, now obviously I'm new here, but I really like the thought that we are balancing and making priority local companies as part of what we do at T-PAC. I just, I'm, I'm, I also hear her and say, like, can we have them come and appear and, and kinda give us their thought on how they feel like they can be self-sustaining in one or two or three years? Thank you.
Okay. You know, Spencer, to both of the council persons' comments, I think it would be a good idea of not just giving an accounting as Councilwoman Hiller asked for, but some thought to projections of what maybe we have lost too, and what we could gain, not just what has happened. I think that gives us some context, because I would tend to agree, I've always supported T-PAC. I still think it's important to our community as part of our arts commitment, but I do like the idea of being able to show us a plan to change what may be an imbalance of local while we're losing revenue, when, and it puts T-PAC in the frame of a lost loser, when really we're trying to make it sustainable, but make it a varied entertainment base that it appeals to everyone in, in the community. That's always tough to do, because even if you do that, will they come? You know, are the prices right? All those kinds of things that I think are important for us to consider during that discussion, and not be in a rush to say that, well, they haven't met this sustainable idea in the beginning. We can, we can move to change that by how we give direction as to how we can move to change that by how we give direction as to how this body sees that performing art center. And I think it's important for us to kind of give a, a look to it, not just what they're doing right now, but give some perspective to what we've lost because of the policy that we have right now and what we could maybe gain if there's a change in that policy. But I do support keeping T-PAC as a vital part of our arts community. It's just we need to manage it in a different way, I believe. So, thank you. Councilman Kell.
I was kind of thinking about the same lines along the mayor. I mean, a lot of, a lot of these companies and performers, perform at T-PAC, you know, they grow up with that dream of being on, on that stage. But sometimes, you know, we, we have other stages here at Topeka and if we're, if we're losing a ton of money because certain things are going on and we're not maybe necessarily getting the crowd size or whatever, for whatever performance is going on, and we're losing a thousand dollars, we have another performance, we do have other stages at Topeka. And I would like to see, you know, almost like if we keep on going on the same route, here's what's going to happen or what our plan is, or if we start opening it up and looking at, trying to open up dates, what our plan would be from T-PAC. Because I, I know a lot of people have dreams, you know, playing in the expo or, or playing, playing at whatever high school, you know, but sometimes it just doesn't work out. And so if, if the crowds aren't coming, we, like I said, we have Topeka Civic Theater, we have a few other places here in town that performances can go on there. So maybe we look at relocating those, those groups so we can bring in larger paying groups. Thank you.
Okay. Good discussion. City Manager.
So I would tell you this, Mayor, governing body, Rita and I, over the years, have come up to T-PAC. I think we saw the Five Lives of Elvis there once. That was, that was a highlight. That was a highlight. But we've come up to T-PAC and we've come up specifically for major shows, especially around the Christmas holiday and that. And we have always enjoyed it. Now, we have a Ottawa Memorial Auditorium. It was an auditorium built to honor the World War I veterans in Ottawa. And it, it needed refreshing. So we went in and we refreshed that. It was expensive. But if you go down there now, it's been built to what Councilwoman Ortiz alluded to, to the present audience you're trying to bring in. Audiences changes. The audience of 40 years ago, the audience of 20 years ago is different than the audience today. The other, the other facet of this that's important is the management of the theater. I went out and hired a, a young lady away from the ra, the radio station down there who had been doing sales for COFO. COFO manager is now talking to me after all those years. But she came in and she put together a team and started getting donations and started getting refreshing going on and started bringing in shows that the community would come to and drawing from a wider circle. So it's management, it's making sure that you have a facility. Like, I remember we came up here and you all served drinks. You can drink alcohol there. That, that was a pretty good deal, you know. So, anyway, T-PAC is worth the effort and it's worth having a group that believes in it and so that that can be used by the community and can be a drawing card for people to come here. Because when we came here, we stayed in a hotel, we ate dinner, Rita shopped, so there you go.
Thank you, sir.
Come back.
Councilman Kell.
Kind of forgot my main point I was getting at, too, and it's kind of alluding to what City Manager said. For years, I beat my head against the wall talking to T-PAC about the, the age of the audience you're trying to attract and, and their, their season ticket holders. And then I said, that age range is eventually going to start dropping off. And then I said, what do you do then? And their mentality was, we'll worry about that when that comes up. And since they want to kind of stay in that 40 to 80, 90 range of, of audiences.
You say 40 to 89?
Forty to eighty or nine, or 90. It's, I'm in the 40s now also. Same with Councilman Miller here. So, but they did not want to look at younger, audience-driven acts. And I always felt like, I beat my head against the wall for a good five to 10 years on that. And I just, I quit. And I said, I'll take my money elsewhere. And then also just the recurring acts. You know, I love certain things, but once I see it once or twice, I'm good. You know, the Oak Ridge Warriors have been to Topeka, I don't know how many times. After I've seen that once or twice, and they have nothing new, then it's, it's kind of boring. I mean, I saw Savannah Bananas two years in a row. They came back to Kansas City this year. I had no plans on going. Again, I seen it two years in a row. It was fun, it was exciting. But it kind of shined and worn off of it. So I've said for years, we need to work on a variety of age ranges and a variety of acts to try to get people into, into T-PAC. Because I think that'll be one of the biggest things for, for them is just getting people in and not just, here's a donation for season tickets. I'll see you when I see you when I come there, you know. And that's why I felt like sometimes as all they were looking at was season tickets. And if people show, they show. If they don't, they don't.
So- Okay. Councilwoman Hiller.
Just in their defense, I mean, T-PAC has put together a pretty fresh board that's very committed to T-PAC. And, and I don't want my comments to sound not supportive either, but we are still pulling out of COVID and the whole theater and live arts market is, is regrowing. So it's a good time to challenge them on it. But I do think they've got some good people. Thank you.
City Manager.
So I would also say, Mayor, governing body, there also is a bigger picture here in a way that connect with the community, especially your schools, your colleges. There, there are, there are programs for auditory, for auditorium managers. And now you think about the music boards that's in there. You think about how the technicians have to control things. You can make a connection to the colleges or to the school where you have aspiring people who really want to do that, who, that they love music and they want to do that. And you could kind of help fold that in to a learning laboratory. Now, think about this. If you're able to get that back on track, you actually put in a recording studio and you start saying to aspiring artists, listen, come in, of course, the city attorney would have to write the right contract, come in, we'll let you use our studio, we'll take a, a percentage, or when you make it big, then we want you to give money back to the community. So there are, if you have the right leadership there, if you have the right management, there are a lot of things you could do to promote that facility.
Thank you. Okay. Good discussion. Are we past this point? Okay. Thank you, Rochelle. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on now to public comment. We have two individuals signed up for comment this evening. First is Augie Bogina. Is that correct, sir? Is that correct, Bogina?
That is correct. Thank you. My name is Augie Bogina. My address is 6814 Blue Jacket, Shawnee, Kansas. I am a partner in a building at 733 South Kansas in Topeka. In 2023, a, the structure to our south was demolished and a new, a new building is being built. In part of their construction, they removed the party wall that tied the two buildings together. I previously sent you a, an engineering report that, that we retained from the, from a licensed Kansas engineer. And I asked him if it was dramatic, but he says it's not. But, but his opinion is that the construction to our south will, has a realistic potential of a future wall collapse and significant consequences. And I think all of us should be concerned with this. I've asked the staff to be involved and they've said it's a civil matter between us and the, and the adjoining owner. The adjoining owner's proposal to us is to place a small roof over the gap between the buildings and call it a day. And I don't understand why it should be our responsibility to make sure that these buildings are safe when the city has all the authority to do so under their ordinances. And if we cannot come to a conclusion with the city, then our only cho, you're putting us in a position of our only choice is, is litigation. And, and we're not trying to do that. We didn't cause any of this. We have no way that we can fix it because it's on the other side of our property. And we just don't, we're just, it's, it's, it's difficult for us to try and solve something we have no authority over and, and no ability to do so. And so what I'd like to ask the city to do, or the, the mayor and council to do, is to engage, have the staff engaged with both parties so that we can find a solution. And nobody wants to see a wall failure in downtown on a public sidewalk and with buildings that are occupied. And, and it, it's, so that's what we would ask the city to do, is to become engaged in trying to find a solution and not have it come to where the building is finished and everyone walks away and says that, that we should, you know, just live with it. So I can answer any questions or we can leave it there.
Thank you, Mr. Bogina. This is usually not a give and take opportunity. You make your statement and request.
I understand. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Second person signed up is Mr. Henry McClure.
Good evening, Your Honor.
Good evening.
Thank you. Nice to see you. I'm not so worried about four minutes anymore. My YouTube channel gets two and a half hours of view a day. I think it's hard to fathom that, especially for me. But, um, so I'm not going to take up much of your time. I would like to invite you guys all to come out to Mainline Printing. It's a, my favorite part of school was field trip. And why don't you guys all take a field trip and come out and look at Mainline Printing? You can't believe the printing presses they got in there. They got a couple of one-of-a-kind holographic printers that they made. And they've got millions and millions of dollars invested. Okay, what are we doing here?
You said you didn't care.
Well, be that way.
Took you at your word. Go ahead.
That was actually the best, you know, I had to quit. Why am I ahead? But anyway, it's like when Biden said, I should just go home at the beginning of the State of the Union address. He was right. So, um, anyway, I'm inviting you all out. I've got a run of the roost and I'd like you guys to see what we go, got going on out there. Braxton was out there with his team. It didn't really show very well. I got to clean it up. I've got a little standing water. We, you know, but the message is from John Parker of Mainline Printing is don't lose that deal. We, you know, we want to do anything we can to help the city of Topeka to make that deal. And I think I beat that drum pretty hard with Braxton and, and we want to be very accommodating. All right. So, Mr. Banks has asked me to look into why it's taken two years to get a Pizza Hut done in his district. And, you know, I kind of really liked the way this meeting went. There's a lot of great segues of the, you know, play to the audience that you got. Well, 20 years ago, the economic development was different. And if we looked at, at economic development, like the mall business, which I grew up in, Shawnee County has got its anchors now. Now let's fill up the middle with little deals. So I requested from Go Topeka, the city of Topeka, you know, prayed to God to get a sewer line for a hundred grand to do that Pizza Hut deal. And I got 70 pages of stuff to go over. Rhiannon hasn't contacted me yet for, to get that meeting with you. But you know that if we'd have done that deal, a hundred grand would already be recaptured. It would have paid for itself. And so I've made, I want to make a core request. I put it in writing. You know, we really need to see where the grants, gifts, scholarships and stuff that Go Topeka doled out, which I don't even think's legal to do. And when you really think about that and you think about having another Pizza Hut, where do we want to put our money? Let's put our money in little infrastructure deals. I like that ready reserve. All right, I'm going to quit. Why am I ahead? 13 is a good number. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to the announcements. Madam, Madam Clark.
Okay. On the March 19th agenda, we have one mayoral recognition. It's theater in our schools month. We have two presentations, Topeka Metropolitan Transit Authority update and the 2023 Development and Growth Management Annual Report. On the consent agenda, we have one resolution for a special event called Fight Night. Action items is a, let's see, we have a zoning resolution for a conditional use permit on 116 Southwest The Drive. We also have another resolution for the MTAA Philip Billard Pump Station, a final plat for South Subdivision Number Three located around Southeast Etzel Avenue. And then we have the resolution on the use of the 2023 use of general fund reserves. And then we will continue discussions on the CIP.
Thank you, Brenner. City Manager.
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Let's start with Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. First is, I think sometime in May, may get changed slightly, but we will give a presentation on where we at with the land bank program. We've been meeting pretty regularly as a group. We've got some actual movement. I think in the next couple of meetings that we have over the next two months, we're going to start identifying some properties and taking a real look at what we were intended to do in the first place. And so it'll be kind of exciting to give that presentation. But we want to keep everyone up to date on where it's headed and what it's doing. And so I think we'll try to do that in May after we've had the next couple of meetings and start identifying some properties. Second thing is, I just want to thank not just Amanda but other staff members who continue to carry the water for all local governments by going up to the Capitol on a pretty regular basis. It's a little, easier is not the right word, but we are the capital city and we're here. So it's, so I think we can get over there kind of quicker and sort of hold that mantle for everybody. I will, I will save everybody from my rant, but it is amazing that there is a certain amount of disdain by people in key positions in that building for local government as a whole. And it is frustrating and I don't know where it comes from. But it's there. And so Topeka's doing a pretty good job of representing the entire state when they go up there and say, you know, let us do what we got to do locally. So just kudos to Amanda and the whole staff who, who she, I think reluctantly goes up there, some of them, maybe not all of them, but they've all done a great job. The staff members who've shown up the last couple of months to give testimony and get grilled by legislators. And the last one is, obviously, there's St. Patrick's Day Parade this weekend, but mainly just make sure if you're going to go out, please patronize your local businesses who have specials, but be safe, be smart, get home in the right way. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hofer.
This is the next road closure announcement. I want to make sure everyone knows that First Street is going to be closed for project number three on the Polquency Viaduct Utilities Program. You will not be- You will not be able to go east and west on First Street between Tyler and Taylor. You will still be able to get off I-70 coming down the First Street ramp from the west and you will be able to get back on I-70 if you want to head west. It's going to last for eight months. This is going to be people changing their routes by quite a bit and it's not going to be the only one that's upcoming. So just keep your eyes out for signboards, um, road closures and be prepared to change your routes. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me follow up on Councilwoman Hofer's comment about First Street. It's already March. It's going to be closed for eight months. First Street is going to be closed permanently when the Polk Quincy Viaduct Project starts. And so for people that are paying attention, just change your route now. Use Fourth or Fifth Street and, or Sixth Street, uh, as a rule or whatever is appropriate to change routes because it, it's really basically closed almost forever now. Um, and it, it's frustrating to keep following construction signs. Um, speaking of the St. Patrick's Day Parade, we have had a tradition in the council for, since before I got on, that, that one or two parties from the council carried the Topeka banner at the front of the parade. And I checked with Liz today and asked if she put it out to the council members to see if anybody wanted to carry that banner and she had not yet. So heads up, if anybody wants to do it, it's got a, the new one has a strap on it. So one person can carry it all by themselves, but it's on a pole, so you can have two. We have had council members before take, bring a child along to either help carry or come along. So it's kind of fun. You're at the very front of the parade and then you're, you can go watch it again because you get done first. So just wanted to advertise that. I've, I've been the default person. I love doing it, so nobody else volunteers, I'll do it, but it's fun to take a turn. And on a little bit different community note, I encourage everyone, if you haven't already seen the directory of activities for the Brown v Board seventieth anniversary, rather than me trying to give you a web address, if you just Google Brown v Board seventieth anniversary, there are, it is packed with opportunities and events, um, that started actually a few months ago, but going through March, April, May seventeenth is the anniversary. There'll be some pretty big events shortly after that as well. Um, I signed up to be in the spoken word upperetta, which is going to be, going to go public on the twenty-fourth of May, but they actually have, uh, events booked into July already. Tremendous things for yourself, for family, friends, uh, so encourage everyone to get that list. It's constantly being updated, so I would say keep the link rather than print the list, but, um, encourage you. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Valdiviaca. Deputy Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sorry.
It's okay.
I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to give a thanks to Councilwoman, uh, Michelle Hofer. Went by Six Engage today and that fence was up. I knew a lady could get that job done, so I want to thank you for doing that for me, especially after the former board member didn't, didn't seem to get it done. So it looks good over there. Um, I also wanted to thank, um, you know, several of us attend a, a lot of NIA meetings and I think I'm up to eleven or twelve. Heck, I don't know, I just go. Um, but I want to thank my colleagues who've agreed to partner up with me and, and, and share the load, that, that means a lot. Um, and I also want to thank staff who goes, um, all of the staff out there. Um, I like to thank our city manager for attending. These are after hours and with people that volunteer a lot of hours, but they, but they don't get paid. But it's for the betterment of the city to answer questions that are coming down the pipe. I'd like to thank Braxton last night for, he didn't really have on his gloves, but he got punched a lot, but he knew how to handle it. So, um, I think that's important when we say thanks to staff who is doing double duties out there. Um, we all know up here we're short-staffed and so I just want to tell staff that I appreciate them. I've seen Monique Lade at, at different NIA members on a Sunday. I remember she came over for me. Those people really appreciate being heard and they appreciate you explaining to them what is going on. They might not like the answer, but they appreciate getting an answer and getting it face to face. Um, so those are the people that we work for and I, and, um, those are the people that cert, that you serve, that we serve, and it's important to them, um, whether it's a tragic. I've been getting a lot of, lot of crime stuff in, in my district over there. Um, and, and I always get a quick response, whether it's from TPD, the chief, whether it's from staff and what we can do. Um, and, and I just want to say thank you. I appreciate it. I think thank you goes a long way. Um, and even bouncing it off some of my colleagues as well. Um, but let's band together and, and get through this. We're, we're riding this storm. It's very evident, we're riding this storm and we've got people that are jumping ship for whatever reason, but, um, I love Topeka and I know we're all here because we want, we, we also love Topeka. Um, so let's continue to stay on this ship and, and help each other where we can and, um, continue to be patient with our employees and let them know that you appreciate them as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to say thank you to Rochelle and her team for helping me last Friday gain some knowledge. I really appreciate that. Uh, also like to let everyone know that the new store in my district, God Storehouse, has really been going well. Uh, people are there from start to finish, so really happy to have them in my district or our district and that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilman Kell?
First off, I'd like to thank the, uh, city workers that have been working on the encampments. Um, I, I, I feel you when you, when they say that it's not their favorite job to do, uh, and, and, but they've been doing a great job of doing that. Kansas Kids Wrestling was this last weekend. It was an awesome event. I was there for all three days of it. Uh, talked to people that stayed at the hotel, uh, had very good things to say about the hotel and the staff, especially the check-in process. They said that, felt like that just flew through. Um, St. Patty's Day, make sure there's the, the Irish Fest Parade, also a five K. So just make sure you're, uh, working around the, the shutdowns in the roads downtown and on your routes to and from. Also wanted to recognize Siemens Women's Basketball Team, they won a state title. Women's, uh, Washburn Rule, Women's Wrestling won a state title. Uh, Easton Brocksterman, Christian Marshall and Brody Bryan, uh, Washburn Rule won their weight class, uh, championship and Reiken Carver of Shawnee Heights won his weight I think I stole Marcus's thunder, so sorry about that.
Are you, are you done, sir?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as a kind request, uh, last time you spoke about wrestling, stay in that lane right there. Let me handle this basketball stuff. Um, so right along with what you were saying, I want to make sure that those schools are recognized. It is incredibly hard to do what these teams have done. Uh, there's a lot of good basketball across this state and we have five teams this year that got third place or higher, which is an incredible feat. Um, the third-place finishers, um, coached by Carville Reynolds, uh, Hayden in the three A, um, Highland Park, our five A, coached by Mike Williams, got third place. Uh, second place finished by Washburn Rule in six A by Kevin Boardwick and his team. Um, but we do have two state champions, uh, Matt Tinsley over at Siemens, the five A champs, and Kyle Porter with Silver Lake, three A champs. It's incredible for us to have this many teams taking that many spots and that, getting medals at these state tournaments. That goes to show that, uh, we have a lot of kids in this area. I know Silver Lake is right outside, but they're, the greater Topeka area that, uh, really shows what we can do, not just at state, but when these kids go to these tournaments across the nation, they compete and we have good basketball right here. So I just want to make sure that, shout it out and thank you for your time.
Councilman Dover?
I'm the last one?
You are.
All right. Let me see. Now, I've, I've got nothing. Thank you.
Well, there's a couple of things I would just like to mention. Uh, both of our, um, service-oriented departments, the police department and the fire department, have upcoming exams for entry levels and I want to make sure that those people who are interested in serving their city in the capacity of either a policeman or a firefighter to check our website. I think the TPD's is in March and, uh, firefighters is in April. So I would encourage people who are seeking, uh, fulfilling career in, in either of those professions to, uh, give us some consideration. Uh, so that's one thing. And also along that line, I'd like to, uh, do a shout out to Chief Phillips. Tell him we're thinking about him and hoping everything goes well. And I had a, um, a nice talk with, uh, Rochelle today. And I want to thank you again for the work you have continued to do for the city. Um, our visit today gave me some insight on some things. I appreciate that. I, I really do, uh, tell you with all honesty, we will miss you because you do an excellent job and I said, I think you set the bar high, uh, for everybody else, not just in your department, but just with regards to service to the community. So thank you again, Rochelle, for everything you continue to do for us until that last final day. So, and I know we'll see you around, right? You'll still be in the community. That's good. All right. So, as I understand it from the city attorney, there is need to have one executive session?
Yes.
If you please read.
The motion would be to recess into executive session, not to exceed one hour, to discuss upcoming performance goals for the interim city manager and candidate, and separately, candidates for the permanent city manager as allowed under KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff may be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations, interim city manager, and other staff he finds necessary.
Okay, we've heard the need for executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to go into executive session by Councilman Kell?
Second.
By Councilwoman, uh, uh, Hofer. Uh, we'll just take a verbal vote, everybody? One, no. Everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I'll give you guys about ten minute quick break. Join me back, ten after eight. Okay, coming out of our executive session, no decisions have been made. There's no further, uh, business coming forward this morning. I adjourn this meeting.